I'd like to call to order the Monmouth City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 2. Roll call please, Phillips.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Counselor Spanke.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Here. That brings us to the consent calendar. At this time, we have two items on there. Approval of the minutes for the council meeting of April 18 and approval of the council work session of April 18.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll make a motion to approve them, but with an amendment to the work session notes in the last paragraph where it states that it was asked if A-frame signs were taken out of the code completely, would the existing signs be grandfathered in? I believe that the last sentence should be changed to, Mr. Chevrolet said such signs would not be grandfathered.
So that was the motion. Okay, it's been moved.
Was that substantively correct? I wasn't here, I'm just here.
That's my recollection. I asked the question at the time, so I believe I remember it correctly. Because of the transitory nature of A-frame signs, they would not own any vesting in that rule. You have to comply with current evolving regulations.
Right. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Correctly, minutes pass. The next item on the list is the mayor's report. And tonight, we've got four committee and board appointments. I've got Patrick Aldrich for the Bike Ped, Susan Myers for Bike Ped, Roxanne Belts for Arts and Culture, Patty Dixon for Arts and Culture, and Wallace Rutledge for the Tree Board. So do I have a motion to...
I move we approve all four.
Actually, it's five.
Five. I'm sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to approve these people for their boards and commissions. All those in favor, signal aye. Signal aye or signal no.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. They all are appointed. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have reports from council representatives of boards and commissions. Counselor Silvernagle.
Great, thank you. Senior Advisory Board met on April 25. We spent quite a bit of time, Margaret Minugian-Hodel was there and was talking to us about kind of orientation and how we become more culturally diverse and inclusive and how we go about trying to change that over time in the senior center. It was great discussion. I think everybody learned something from it. You know, we'll have to kind of work as we go along on that moving forward. Sunny, we spent quite a bit of time on that one. Let's see, at the breakfast, which is May 6th coming up, movie and display of pictures for the historic commission stuff that we've heard a time or two about, that'll be happening this Saturday. Monmouth Community Foundation, they had $3,500 that came in from them. They're spending 850 of it on two things, a combination of internet and a cart for TV that's in one of the new rooms. And let's see, Armed Forces this day will be on May 19th, and I'll have some activities there. World War I, II primarily talks. And they're also looking at adopting the senior program. And we spent just a minute talking about the B schedule going forwards. Good B. And that concludes my report.
All right, thanks. Counselor Johnson.
Well, I couldn't go to the Planning Commission because it had a public hearing, so I need to go back to my old favorite one, Historic and Old Commission. And like I said, the 6th is our big day for the whole year, and it will be at the senior citizens and as a present program or the handout for the building. And we're going to have two people there to speak, which that's pretty nice, maybe three. One of them was the hidden monuments and cemeteries that people will go around the county and clean headstones and stuff. He's going to speak on it. And the hidden cemeteries that you're not supposed to go to and think, okay, kind of interesting. And the other one is we're going to have quite a bit of talk on the rules that were basically the function of this town when it first started.
Good, thanks. Counselor Sharmar.
The Tree Board didn't meet in April.
Did you see it?
But that doesn't mean that they were not doing things. On Earth Day on April 22nd, a bunch of us, including Counselor Johnson, were out weeding with some intrepid little kids and planting Oregon grapes. And Mark Nancy was helping us, letting us know what to do. Also, everyone should know that there are so many beautiful trees here in Monmouth that we're sort of running out of places to put them. And we will possibly be starting a program to ask people, individuals, if they would like to have trees planted in their yard.
Thanks, Counselor Carey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MINET Board met on April 27th and discussed a number of things, not the least of which was the outage that occurred for some of our subscribers. I was gone at the time that occurred, so I don't, I didn't experience it myself, but I know some of our neighbors did. And apparently, it was due, kind of an anomalous situation, was due to some failure of, or a failure of some equipment that really was sort of unexpected. Unfortunately, it wasn't supported by the, because it's a bit old, it wasn't supported. So our guys had to do all the, you know, detail and sort of diagnosis and correction of it. And it took a while for that, for all to get back on, I believe they are now. And they're reviewing their response on how to get that information out. There was a lot of question in terms of what's happening. Is it just me? Is it me or is it the system and all of that? So that will be sort of as they debrief the incident, they'll discuss that, I'm certain. The financial report was good for the month of March. We had the highest in the last 12 months considerably, maybe on record, highest operating income amount, even though we had a little bit of a slight downturn in our revenue, they were able to pare some expenses. And so we had, you know, another good month of generating what you might consider profits. The, one of the things that they've begun to do in the financial report is to begin to develop projections for the amount of debt service that is going to be, come due June 1, as opposed to December. And then the amount that will be available for MINET, the company, to pay and then the obligation of the backfill on the cities. And at the moment, they're projecting right now that the company will pay 75% of the indebtedness and the two cities will split the remaining 25% of that. You know, that's tracking pretty close, certainly better than it has been over the years. So I guess that was the good news. We'll hear more about that tonight. We have a couple of MINET Board members. Bob Mason is here, David Ritchie is here, I think Ken Day is going to be here, and of course, the staff. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to interact with them. Our next meeting is May 25th, Henry Hill Education Center. All are invited. That concludes my report.
All right, thanks. Any community announcements? All right. Phillips, do you have a list of people?
Well, I was told they wrote it on the wrong list. That wasn't for an agenda item, so I have nobody signed up for an agenda item.
So do you have anybody signed up for a non-agenda item?
Well, they sign up when they come up to the table.
Okay.
It's Citizen Comment time.
All right. So at this time...
The mayor's report.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Anyway, just a couple of things. Public Works, we got our last two specialist positions are actually almost hired. One was an internal, so we'll have to then do recruitment to backfill the one position. So we're still kind of grinding away getting everything fully staffed, but good progress there. Unfortunate one in Public Works, we're getting a lot of vandalism in our parks. Madrona Bathroom was tagged with graffiti. The Main Street Park Bathroom just chronically is having things broken in that unit, so at one point, I think we're going to point out, we have soap dispensers in Main Street Park, we're just going to take them out. I'm not sure what someone does with a soap dispenser when they take it, but we're definitely having some issues here and there, so. Police Department getting close to making a couple offers on a couple of police positions. We always got that whole lag, but at least we get somebody in the huff room going. And then the sidewalk project across the street, Monmouth Power and Lights in there right now, doing their work, getting everything tore up pretty well for their work. And then we got the contractor ready to go. That'll be taken care of before July 4th.
All right. Thanks. So that brings us to Citizen Comments.
Can I ask you one question? When will we get CED by the books?
They should be, I think, when's their third day? They're in the middle right now? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So now I believe it's time for Citizen Comments. At this time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. A maximum of three minutes per item. And if you come up, state your name, city that you live in, put your name and information on the sheet that's at the table. Is there anyone you'd like to see?
Just give me a minute, I'll write my name down and then I'll state it.
Okay.
My name is Anne Morris. I'm a Monmouth resident and civic volunteer. I currently serve on the Library Board, the Arts and Culture Commission, and the Retail Restaurant Monmouth Engaged Committee. I've attended numerous city council meetings in recent years, some with only a handful of people in attendance, others with standing room only. On each occasion, I was glad to have had the opportunity to witness our city at work, to learn more about various issues, and to participate through my presence and my voice. I've often encouraged friends and neighbors to attend council meetings as a way to become engaged and informed. On April 18th, during the time set aside for Citizen Comments, Barbara Harriman stood up to speak on the issue of amphitheater use by Apple Box Children's Theater. She was told by the mayor that Citizen Comments were reserved for items not on the agenda. As the mayor continued to speak, the message I heard was, "We know what you have to say. We don't need any more information, and this is wasting valuable time that we need to use to address more important city business." What I heard was, "This is our meeting, not yours, and you're interrupting." I was shocked by the condescending and dismissive tone. I find it unacceptable. I cannot imagine this is the tone that any of you intend to foster at council meetings. The message I've heard both at the April 18th meeting and at others in recent months is that the volume of comments on various issues has been disruptive to regular city business. I disagree. I applaud all those who choose to speak on issues, from sanctuary city status to the use of the park amphitheater, from issues regarding parking on Main Street to incidents of hate speech in our community. This is democracy at work. It is vital to the health of our city and our democracy that all members of the public feel welcome to speak at city council meetings. Plan for public comments and organize the agenda accordingly. At no time should someone who comes to address council feel shut down because council is worried that the meeting will run too long, or because you've already received emails on the issue, or because the issue has been raised in a previous meeting. Three minutes, that is the time limit on each comment, and it is not too much to ask. At some of these recent well-attended meetings, it appears as if the policy for public comment was being invented on the spot. This lack of procedure creates confusion and fosters unfairness. I'm here to ask the city council to present and adhere to a clear and transparent policy for hearing comments from the public. In your articulation of a policy, I ask that you address the following. Excuse me. If there is a sign-in sheet, its purpose should be clearly defined and it should be used consistently. And I thank Phillips for clarifying that to me tonight. That was helpful. The three-minute time limit for public comments should be adhered to clearly and consistently. The public should be able to make comments on any subject, even if it appears as an item on the meeting's agenda. I'd always assumed this was the case, but there was a statement to the contrary at the April 18th meeting, so I was confused. The role of public comment during work sessions should be clarified. I'm here to ask that council clearly communicate the policy for public comments so that citizens will be aware of their right to speak and will understand how and when to do so. I am glad that the mayor wrote about this issue in the community notes this month, but more can be done. I suggest that at the beginning of every council meeting, a welcome is given to those present, along with instructions regarding the sign-in sheet and the policy for public comments. In addition, I suggest you create an insert for the utility bill with information regarding the city council meetings, including the protocol for speaking, a description of the process, and a reminder that meetings are public. And it would be helpful if this information were duplicated on the city website and on social media. I know that city business is time-consuming, and it is challenging to get all the work done during two meetings a month, and that members of city council are volunteers, giving their time for the greater good. People taking time to come to meetings are an important part of the governing process as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Eric. Thank you. I want to address, since I'm kind of the target of some of this information, we actually do have a policy in place for the procedures for council. They were revised and updated in 2011. I've asked the city manager if he would get those up on the website so that you can see those. As to, two things. One, I did not tell Barbara Harriman that she couldn't talk. I just said, "At the time that was allowed, which was in the work session, she could talk." Now, I don't know how that got overlooked. And then I went back and I actually transcribed the first part of the meeting, so I would know exactly what I said. And I said, "This is our council meeting." I did not say, "This is my council meeting." I've never said, "This is my council meeting" in any council meeting. And so it's a challenge for me because there were a lot that was misunderstood that hit Facebook that was very disconcerting to me, that people were taking information that they didn't fully understand. Some people who hadn't even been to the meeting were already saying stuff derogatory towards me that had no idea what the real truth was. And so I'm open for people to talk. In fact, I actually have been probably more lax with allowing people to talk at the wrong time. And the misconception is, is that everybody gets to talk when they want to talk. So I suggest that people go back and really look at our policy and see what it is, because as I understand the rules of the council and the procedures, I have not violated any of them. And so with that, Mr. Harriman, I believe you want to come up and say something?
Yes.
And could you please keep it to three minutes?
I will, yes, I will. And I promise no shouting this time.
My name is Rob Harriman, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Apple Box Children's Theater. At the April 18th city council meeting, we discussed ways in which our operation can move our children's theater productions to the Main Street Amphitheater. After many emails, discussions, and finally meeting on the stage, it has become apparent to us that this is simply not workable. Frankly, we just don't want to deal with this anymore. We probably could have fought and clawed our way onto this stage, contorting ourselves and jumping through the hoops, but it shouldn't be like that. And in the end, the prize is not worth the pursuit. The stage, despite our input, is not designed for theater. Policies and procedures make it too difficult to adapt it as such. We do not have a community amphitheater, we have a music hall. We do not want to feel like a burden or a nuisance. When we approached the university about moving our operations back to their stage, they welcomed us with open arms, offering to do whatever was in their power to make our play a success. And that was the moment we realized what was missing, the feeling of cooperation and mutual respect, the feeling that they wanted us on their stage and that they value what we do. Art needs freedom and fluidity. We need to feel safe and to be in a place that understands this. I love this town. It's my hometown, it's my children's hometown. So it leaves a bitter taste in my mouth to leave this facility wrapped up in red tape and at the mercy of politicians and bureaucrats and to be used by paid performers from out of town. But apparently, that was someone's vision, someone who had a vision quite different than mine. On a side note, I find it troubling that the policies and procedures that have been cited as gospel in our last meeting are being voted on by the council this evening. Something is clearly broken here. I do want to take a moment to thank the city council members who reached out to us during this process, and you know who you are. Your patience, your understanding, and your open communication is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, it is not enough. On a lighter note, I'll be back here at the end of June to invite you all to our performance of Arabian Nights at the university's stage. It will be a beautiful evening, and it'll be one that you won't want to miss. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that three minutes? That wasn't ten. Like I said, I've been trying to cooperate to let people talk. Anyone else for Citizen Comments? All right. At this time, we'll move on.
Bill Foster. And that and two and a half, we'll probably buy you a cup of coffee somewhere. The amphitheater was built, we spent a lot of time on that, holding a lot of meetings with the citizens of this city. We held open houses. We ran the diagrams. We started out with four, now it's down to two. We posted that all summer long at one of the music, at the music in the park. The citizen said, "This is the design we want." The citizen said, "This is where we'd like to have it." Now, that wasn't always my choice, but the citizen said that's what they want. So the city didn't dictate how or where the amphitheater was being built. The citizens chose the design. The citizens chose where it sits. Simple quote. Going to the rules, I've served in this community one way or another for as long as I can remember. I'm getting old. But, and I've had my disagreements with the mayor before he was mayor, I've had some comments with all of you guys periodically. I didn't feel slighted, I felt disappointed, I felt embarrassed by you guys. Now, the mayor may not have chosen these words in the best manner, but what he spoke was the truth. We have to have the rules and orders to follow. And last council meeting, I didn't see where you guys were willing to do that. Everybody has had the right to speak when their agenda was at the work session. I've been there numerous times. I've been able to speak. Never been denied. If it was on the agenda, it was always stated. You can speak on the turn at the workstation. The council chose to do otherwise. But even in that instance, you didn't follow what you said. The comment was, "The kids need to speak. It's getting late, let's get the kids to speak." So you recessed. How many kids spoke? Did you ever question that? You couldn't even follow your own rules for five minutes. I watched a Western the other day, and they had a sheriff there that followed the rules. The townspeople didn't like it. The governing body didn't like it, the fact that the rules were being followed. So they decided they'd have the sheriff killed, and they did that. And after they got through prostituting themselves, they realized, "Wait a minute, I made some mistakes. We should have not had that happen." All I'm asking for you guys is to think about the rules, follow the rules, you know what they are. You were elected to do that. Just do it. I don't think anybody would be slighted if they said, "Hey, your turn is back there." I've had that done to me. I've been able to sit at this table when I felt I needed to. Just think about it. You're here to help get this city going. I can see this council being 14, 15 years ago, and it wasn't good then. And all of you need to decide what you were elected for. It was to promote the city, it's not to take sides, follow the rules as they're written. Go through the proper steps if you don't like it, to adjust. Decide what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
All right. Any other Citizen Comments tonight? With that, we'll get started on our business agendas. We have a public hearing on Legislative Amendment 17-01, amendments to the Sign Code subdivision ordinance and zoning. Does that... Sure. Open the hearing.
Honorable mayor members of the council, this is Legislative Amendment 17-01. These are proposed amendments to three sections of the city code that the Community Development Department works with quite a bit. That's Chapter 15-10, the Sign Code, Title 17, subdivisions and partitions, and Title 18, zoning. I thought what I'd do is briefly walk through the staff report summary of the amendments. And when the amendments are attached, if you have any specific questions, then you could go ahead and ask any questions of me and take testimony. The first set of amendments are to the Sign Code, Chapter 15-10, and there's several of them. The first would allow placement of A-frame signs near intersections along Main Street for businesses that are located on side streets downtown. This would legitimize what has become a common practice to put the A-frames out at the corners. I looked at the businesses, the distance from Main Street for the businesses who were doing this, and it's 75 to 80 feet. So I think that that's half the block depth. So that would, that's, that first set of amendments would allow that, and that would, you know, obviously, they would have to make a site design such that pedestrian traffic could flow, et cetera. The next is, we require signage for approved home occupations, and that language just matches up what's already in the Home Occupation section of the zoning ordinance. The next couple of sections or a couple of amendments relate to signage for drive-through menu board signs. We discovered that we don't currently have any standards in the existing Sign Code. So what is provided in the amendments are a definition and standards for outdoor menu board signs. The proposed standards would allow two outdoor menu board signs per drive lane with a maximum size of 32 square feet each. And I did a quick survey of the existing signs around, and this seems pretty consistent with the larger signs that are currently placed. I would also add that several weeks ago, I hand-delivered letters to all of the businesses that currently have a menu board with a letter explaining the proposed amendments, my card, the notice, the hearing notice, and a copy of the amendments. So I didn't hear any, hear any from anyone, and no one attended the Planning Commission hearing, but we made that information available. And then the last amendment to the Sign Code corrects some typographic errors and deletes a reference to a special permit. There really is no special permit that's issued through the Sign Code. Couple of housekeeping amendments to the subdivision ordinance. One would just increase the number of copies that need to be provided with an application. This allows staff to get those copies out to our reviewers that include the Planning Commission and various departments and agencies. And it also deletes a requirement that the form or the application be submitted at least 45 calendar days prior to the next Planning Commission hearing. Applications can be submitted at any time. Once they're deemed complete by staff, staff schedules those for processing in a timely manner, so that's really not needed. We're not holding on to applications. The next one, I'll use my visual aid. There was formerly a provision in state statute that said, "When you have two subdivision lots and you are going to adjust a lot line between the two, and all you're going to do is move it, it's going to stay the same length and just move along..." it's gonna stay the same length and just move along a common line, that when you do such an adjustment, you don't have to file a survey with the county. That provision is now out of state statute, and so we've got to take it out of our subdivision ordinance where it is. Then the last are amendments to the zoning ordinance, chapter eighteen. The first relates to the design review process. It changes some language that's consistent with design review for, well, this is for design review in three commercial areas. It would make it consistent with the site plan review exemption for industrial site remodeling, and also the site plan review provisions for areas that aren't in these three commercial districts. So basically what it exempts is if you are doing a remodel that is less than, you're expanding a building by less than twenty-five percent of the site or structure, you're exempted from having to go through the design review process. It's an application that, I don't, staff really don't want to have to process for a minimal adjustment. It's a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cost, it's about a month of process time. It's just, it seems a little bit too much, and the amendments we're proposing are consistent with some other exclusions that are already provided for smaller expansions in the zoning code. And then the very last amendments are to the landscaping chapter, and those just verify that irrigated landscaping is a requirement, or there also provides an option for doing xeriscate, which is drought tolerant or low water needs landscaping. So that's a summary of the amendments. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. On page three of your staff report, you have the recommendation from the planning commission who held a public hearing on April nineteenth. They recommended adoption of legislative amendment seventeen dash oh one. So your next step would be to go ahead and take testimony if there is any, close the public hearing, and then move to your deliberations. You also have a proposed motion on page three of your staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone with questions?
I have a question, but I would like to really commend Mr. Fancy for including xeriscate in this. A lot of times we forget that we do have a potential for a water crisis, so thank you for that.
Sure.
Just that this is a combination, and I'm guessing it was probably marked for this for ease of dealing with it, but we got some sort of disparate issues all under one, and as I was reading this, I, well gee, if I support all of these, bar one...
What's that?
Well, no, I just...
Oh.
Rhetorically. You know, I'd hate to be a, you know, argue against sort of this large deal for one element. But I, so I guess I'm wondering why they're sort of strange bedfellows in some way.
Well, these are just little things that I catch. I catch, somebody calls me and says, "What's your drive-through menu standards?" And I look, oops, we don't have any, put that on the list. I then schedule work sessions with the planning commission where we kind of work through and massage the amendments, and then when I get enough of them built up, they may seem disparate, but I get enough of them built up, it's then we'll package it as a legislative amendment. So that's kind of where that comes from.
That's fine. I would like to comment that, you know, Monmouth has had the reputation of being sort of difficult to deal with and so forth, and this is an excellent example of how it will become more easily dealt with. So, you know, my hat's off. I mean, that's good stuff. I saw it delete, I saw it exempt, a lot of things to expedite all of the things related here, so excellent from my standpoint.
So are there any questions?
And I want to thank, you, I was at the meetings with you, and I went and measured almost all those menu board measures, and they're all basically about the same.
Yeah.
So even the ones in Salem, I stopped and hit a couple in Salem, so thanks for all the effort you put into that.
You develop my bad habit of looking at signs.
Yeah, the same thing. Once you get something arranged, then you get your tape measure out, and the guy's going, "What you're doing?" Right. Thanks again.
So with no further questions?
Wait, I have just one question.
Okay.
Will there ever be any interest in regulating the Statue of Liberty who stands out on the street and waves a sign, or the mattress guy, the sign waving people's hands are kind of distracting drivers? Would those fall under a sign code?
I'm not really sure. We had, we had a few years ago, out of the dominoes, I think, on Main Street, you'd have kids out there, it's a job, spinning, you know, standing up there spinning the for-sale signs, so... Yeah, we, one thing our sign code does not allow is the inflatables that fly all over the place. Those are prohibited. That was one of our minor amendments a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It is hard, though. On the public right of way, you're not directing a thing, it's as a person. And those are difficult to regulate. They come under free speech. Yeah. Yeah, difficult to regulate. That's why you see so many of them, not because they're loved.
All right, so, hearing none, any more questions? It's time for the public to make any statements they want to make. Chuck.
Hi, I'm Chuck Thurman, sixteen sixty-four, Yosemite. One thing I would ask that you take into consideration as we look at the sign ordinance, and I'm just, the easiest way is to tell you an experience I had. Driving over by Washington Federal Bank, there were sandwich signs too close to the intersection, and we have the handicap ramps there. I was going less than twenty miles an hour, I did not see a citizen in a wheelchair, and out she came into the road. That was a little scary. So if we can avoid sandwich signs, it could be too close to a handicap ramp where she can see us and we can see them, that would be nice. I haven't read this to see that it does, but that could have been a bad accident. Now, I talked to the owner of the business that had it, and he had no clue, so he moved his sign, he doesn't put it there anymore. But we might want to help that right up front so we don't have those situations. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? So at this time...
Close the hearing.
Hearing's closed, and council?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the council accept the recommendations, the planning commission adopt legislative amendment seventeen dash oh one.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Because, shall we address in the...
The, what the code amendment says, that the signs would be located adjacent to the curb, so as not to interfere with pedestrian traffic. So we do have a regulatory way to say, "No, it can't be there, it needs to be here."
Okay. And if they are, who is responsible?
Probably me.
You, okay.
I've been looking for things to do.
Just so I understand, my understanding was, it wasn't interfering with pedestrian traffic, it was interfering with the driver's sight lines to see who was beginning to enter the crosswalk there?
I could not see the person sitting in the wheelchair cutout. She was sitting there, the sign was so large, she could not see me as trying to cross the street, and I could not see her sitting there as a driver going down the road. We were both blinded from each other. So she darted out into the road, so she could see if she could cross safely.
Okay.
And that was a real quick break reaction, and...
So do we have something that addresses that?
Well, we just have the reference, well, specifically, I would have to take a look at this situation. We say it's to be adjacent to the curb, so as not to interfere with pedestrian traffic. We do have vision clearance triangles that we're supposed to maintain clearance at intersections, so we can enforce it that way, as we can get out of vision clearance triangle.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of a, like the triangle, it goes down both the intersecting streets, you connect the lines in that triangle where drivers would have to look, it's supposed to be kept with nothing over about two and a half feet.
Okay. So there's a mechanism in place that would assess that?
The mechanism would say, that area's gotta be kept free.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And the size of it is thirty-two square feet, which makes it pretty small when you finish moving.
So does the square, does the square footage apply to the A-frame signs?
Forty inches.
Forty inches. Twenty-four inches, yeah.
Yeah, thirty-two square feet, that'd be quite an A-frame. That'd be capitalist.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Is this roll call vote, or...
This is voice vote, you'll get an ordinance first reading next week, your next meeting, and the second reading that'll be roll call. This is your voice vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. That was legislative amendment seventeen oh one. The next item for business is to adopt the council goals. This would be... Major of work.
Yeah, so each of the city council does a goal-setting session. We did it February eighteenth this year. We had a team-building component, did some general kind of visioning, reviewing some old plans. And then the product that comes out of it is a concrete set of goals for the year. We also take that and make sure we can actually do those goals, and then kind of schedule those out roughly. So the goals that we would have for the twenty-seventeen eighteen year, which starts July one, would be to attain additional street funding, complete the power and light building, determine approach to city hall upgrade, establish a path forward on UGB expansion, and then monitor the ODOT plan for Highway ninety-nine. So you can adopt those as-is, you can tweak them a little bit, if you think something's really off, pull it back over again.
Any discussion?
Well, this isn't about the goals, but it's about the summary of the session notes. I just want to say the husband arrived after I built the house.
No.
That will attract the husband.
So are these goals that council's happy with?
I move approval of two thousand seventeen eighteen goals for the council.
Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm good with the goals. I would like us not to let slide the Monmouth forward discussions and some of the things that were discussed on page five. They didn't rise to the level at this point of a goal. However, I think they're all things that we ought to sort of keep our eye on that medium horizon, or long-range horizon in some cases. And just sort of keep those on the burner, you know, as we go forward into further planning sessions. I was a very productive part of the thing. Our goals are our goals, but these are sort of more long-range view things. But, just a comment, doesn't require anything else.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to accept these as our twenty-seventeen eighteen goals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And passes unanimously. And we're on to our next item, which is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for Monmouth amendments regarding special events permit.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, this is the second reading. These are the amendments that grew out of our recent reworking of all of our reservation forms. This would allow other organizations or individuals to apply for a special events permit and serve alcohol subject to licensing by OLCC. Currently, the code language limits issuance of special events permits to charitable nonprofit organizations only, and requires city council approval. So this, this does two things. It allows other people, subject to licensing by OLCC, to have events, and it also moves the special events permits to review by the city manager.
So this would be ordinance fifteen seventy-three, an ordinance relating to the consumption of liquor and possession of open containers, amending Monmouth City Code section nine dot zero five dot zero four zero, and declaring emergency. Pass it second reading. Is there a motion? Or do we just need to take a...
Do you have a motion on the staff report to adopt the ordinance?
Is this the time for discussion or a motion?
You can do the motion and then get to the discussion.
What's the aim of the motion, or what's the ordinance?
Thirteen seventy-three.
Thirteen seventy-three.
Okay. I move adopting an ordinance seventeen seventy-three, ordinance relating to the consumption of liquor and possession of open containers, and amending Monmouth City Code nine dot zero five dot zero four, and declaring an emergency.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Chuck?
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, there's nothing about this particular instance that I'm worried about, but it seems that the use of the emergency process to pass ordinances quickly should be left to weightier matters. I don't, unless somebody can tell me, what is the emergency in amending?
I asked for it because we're in the process of reserving the parks right now, and it's, there's lots of people wanting it reserved. If we wait until the next, for it to become thirty days after this adoption, it would be the beginning of change.
Yeah, I, the problem is, it's becoming used as an expedient as opposed to addressing emergencies. It's not an emergency that somebody is bound by rules or ordinances that were duly passed following the normal process. It just, the word emergency is gonna lack meaning pretty soon. This isn't the first time we've done it. I don't think it's intended to be a shortcut. We have the requirements of multiple readings and a lengthy process for a reason, and that's to get input. This, either we need to have ordinances always take effect immediately, or we need to have time period before they take effect, and then have a limited exception for emergencies. People wanting to use the park for something that's never been legal before is not an emergency.
Yeah, I just throw out that this is a basic customer service, we're trying to be responsive. I'm just saying, if you could, if you don't think that's an emergency, then we don't have to. And what we'll tell people is, you can't have alcohol until, what, six weeks from now, or whenever we get through the process. That's a judgment call in the council. We typically, the rule of thumb is yes, that you don't use emergencies. We do it where we think there's a need to help, and in this case, it's just, we want to be responsive to the public.
The last one was for a piece of artwork on Woo campus. That was not an emergency.
I think by Woo standard it was.
No, there was no emergency. There was, there was impatience, there was a wish to do it now, no life or property was endangered in the interim. They could have stored the piece of art. And I just think the law has to have a meaning. Now, if we want to amend our process to say, to allow for quicker passage for customer service, for convenience, for expediency, then let's amend the process. I just, I can't look at somebody straight in the face and say, "This is an emergency." So words have to have meaning.
I want to let Lane in.
Yeah, it's a good description, and it's a fair point. Just for clarification, in this case, this ordinance has been through two readings, so it has had the same public presentation as any regular ordinance. The difference with or without the emergency clause would be whether it goes into effect immediately after second reading, or waits for thirty days just for, in the usual process. So in this case, it has been through the two readings. And I would just say, and again, not to insert myself, emergency in the context of emergency clause really is kind of a term of art. It doesn't necessarily mean fire department kind of emergency, it means basically what you want it to mean. And that's a policy choice. So it is up to you whether this is an emergency.
So since Tom brought that up, where does the rest of the council stand on, is it emergency or not?
As it relates to this particular request, I'm fine identifying it as an emergency given what Phyllis said and Lane's term that this is more artistic than substantive.
And I would agree, that's how we've done it in the past when we wanted something to take effect.
to take effect basically immediately. And in this case, I think it helps with the scheduling and stuff. And we didn't get any negative input that would change it in my mind, that we would want to hold for or anything. So I guess I'm in good shape on this one as well. It is an interesting concept, though, depending on the definition.
And I think just perspective. I think if we look at what we do, you're ninety percent plus or just going through a regular process, but we do try to be responsive to folks, and we've never had anybody have an issue with any of our emergency ordinances.
Counselor Sherman?
So we are allowing now private individuals, or we will be allowing private individuals and entities in addition to nonprofit organizations, to provide alcohol in the park. It's just they can't carry their open container onto the sidewalk.
No, they have to comply with all OLCC regulations. Licensed OLCC servers.
Yes.
They've got to have a site plan, they've basically got a fenced area, there's got to be food. It's not roaming the park with beers, it's a beer garden. That's what OLCC allows.
Okay, so we're allowing that, but this particular ordinance says you can't leave the beer garden and with your beer off the hillside.
This all says it's OLCC licensed.
Okay.
So if OLCC says you all got to stand on your head, then that's what they all got to do. Yeah.
But this, this isn't, this is expanding only to charitable nonprofits. This isn't for individuals who just want to have a wedding in the park.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's individual, non-commercial.
Non-commercial.
And nonprofit.
But they've gone through their OLCC licensing, so they comply with all those requirements in order to serve alcohol.
I think where the last discussion was, is you didn't really want a commercial operation. Somebody just rents a space and selling tickets, having a party in the park, something like that. But yeah, so this would actually be for private parties, individuals, and then the nonprofits. So how many, how many applications do we have right now that would fall under this?
Zero. Right now, except for music in the park with their, with the application to have a beer garden.
How many? We've had generally one per year event that allowed, that had a beer garden?
Yeah, sometimes on Fourth of July, we've done it, we've been music in the park. We've, we also never had an amphitheater for too long either, so that's, we have a new facility.
We got it from Light King.
Yeah, Psycho Oregon, right. Psycho Oregon came through, yeah, so, yeah.
What's the, what's the exposure here? I mean, what's the downside to opening this?
The Monmouth Business Association can't do music in the park, beer garden anymore because they're not a charitable nonprofit. It means any individual that might want to have a wedding there can't do it if they're going to serve alcohol.
I mean, what's, what, let's say we pass this, which goes through, what's the downside to opening this up to individuals and a large number of groups? What's the liability that hangs over this? Well, they cover liability.
They've got to purchase insurance.
And obviously, I think the downside would be somebody doesn't follow the rules. And yeah, you could have somebody that hates it. Well, that happens with alcohol. Yeah. That's a possibility, that's a real possibility, you'd have somebody that decides not to follow the rules.
If you have a decision here, you can, you can suspend their party immediately.
Yeah, and just basic enforcement, yeah. If we get a call that, hey, these people are out of control at this park, and a police come over, then they're done.
And OLCC is known to drop by and just see how things are looking.
I think the objective here is to open this up to something other than and beyond the charitable nonprofit organization, so there can be broader use of ours, of our, of the spaces that are identified here.
Yeah, my understanding is this language was all thrown together quickly for when Psycho Oregon was here and they arrived ten years ago or so.
Well, and so I do have a question regarding this, however. In the discussion, in the staff report, and then in the, some of the early entries in the actual ordinance, it identifies, well, for example, item three, it says a city manager upon application by an individual or non-commercial event or nonprofit entity may issue temporary permit. Well, the individual, by an individual, that term sort of drops off in subsequent notations. The second, like item A, there says the organization shall obtain a liquor liability. Are we missing the individual? I mean, that's different than an organization. The organization would cover two, you know, the nonprofit and the non-commercial. I don't know whether it would cover the individual. I'm just asking.
Yeah, you could change that, you could interline, interlineate that to applicant.
Instead of organization.
Yeah.
There's three, three references there where it could be changed just to applicant, and that covers the universe of everybody you've named before.
Is that permitted?
Yes, it sure is. On second reading, that would, that would be an appropriate amendment, as would, back to Tom's comment, if Tom wants to make a motion to strike the, to amend the motion to strike the urgency clause, that would be an appropriate motion as well. But in this case, I think by, just on the record consensus, we can interlineate applicant and replace the organization in both those places, so the ordinance that the mayor signs would have that word changed. Do you consider that part of the motion?
Okay, I would make that motion to affect that change.
And to modify the emergency.
No, I'm not. Organization to applicant. I just want to focus on that at this, at this time.
We already hear motion.
So that's amended to the motion?
Yeah. Motion to amend.
So it's a motion to amend?
Uh huh. To change organization in applicant, three A, three B, and three D to applicant in each case.
And that was moved by Counselor Carey, I haven't heard a second. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to amend. All those in favor of amending to the word applicant in place of organization, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that motion to amend is there. So now we're back to the original motion, which is to adopt the ordinance thirteen seventy-three. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none.
We never got back to me.
Oh.
So anyhow, when we declare an emergency, even if we didn't, wouldn't that still go in effect as of the first of June?
Yeah.
I mean, thirty days from today.
Yes, that would be the difference with or without an emergency.
Right. And we have, we have nobody planning to come? You said we had nobody?
Other than music in the park, no, but.
But that's July.
Yes.
My fault was to raise the issue. I don't feel the need to amend anything, I just think we ought to be sparing with that designation.
Right.
Also, the legislature is wrestling with the same issue.
Are they?
Oh, yeah, very much so.
I guess I would, just to. Just to follow up on Counselor Johnson's point, you know, we're talking now to May thirty-first, so if you, if you pulled the emergency clause, that would just mean somebody would have to be June one or after, or June three, whatever it is.
They'd be able to.
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to reserve in that period, there's no problem. If somebody wanted to reserve before then, that'd be an issue. Likelihood of that happening in May is probably pretty small.
Actually, we have a wedding in May already scheduled.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
So it's been moved and seconded on ordinance. Your roll call, please.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Stanky?
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
All right, and ordinance thirteen seventy-three passes unanimously. Moving on, we're to a resolution adopting a new group use policy.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, this is another offshoot of the work we've been doing on revamping our forms and our policies. So these are the group event policies. These apply to events with more than seventy-five people. In addition, they also include events that were alcohol, fireworks, bounce houses, where there might be some element of risk. So those are all subject to, these are policies that I believe they, do they check off as having read these, Phyllis, when they submit an application? Is that what, that's about, this comes attached to their reservation form, is that right? Yeah. So in the staff report, you can see the notations there as to the changes that were made. We incorporated the rules that were for the amphitheater that were developed by the Parks and Recreation Board. And we also have, at the back, we have a marked-up version if you want to see the specifics of the changes to the group event policies as well. I'll stop there and just ask if there are any questions.
Any questions, Ron?
I'll go back to the, on the reservation fee on Y, you know, on the second page, and it says, notes three-day limit for reservation and adds art groups to those eligible for reservation fee. Can you have it like for three days one month and then three days the next month? Or, I'm trying to, is it three days most, five days for the year?
Well, I think, I think that's something that's still got to be sorted out. I know the Parks and Rec Board talked long and hard about, about that, but I think the possibility exists where a group could say, we want it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the entire summer, because it's three days in a week. So at some point, we might need to put a total on that or no more than three, you know, there's all different calculations you might use, but I think it was one that, when the Parks and Rec Board was looking at that, didn't anticipate anybody really doing anything with that, just because most people just come in, use it for a day. One day is kind of typical use.
All right, this would be resolution. Doug?
Just a question. One of the discussions that I believe, well, I wasn't here, but I believe transpired last time, had to do with some sort of alteration of structures. I didn't see anything that would really prevent it, someone from altering a structure. Like I'm thinking down in, and I don't know how they do it, but Gentle Woods in my neighborhood, they wanted to, you know, significantly alter, pretty much bolt it down, but I suppose they could, you know, add some things to the barbecue that ought not to be there. That seemed to be a bone of contention was the whole.
Well, I think when you look at the actual policies, it's only under item O regarding the amphitheater where there is the statement, no signage or other items shall be affixed to the amphitheater structure. That's, that's the only, so if you got the gazebo, you can tape balloons up, you can have your party there, you put a banner up, but specifically affixing to the structure in, in reference there is the amphitheater structure. That's the, and that was the discussion point at the last meeting, was the amphitheater structure.
But on that point, Counselor Carey, we actually thought about more, what if somebody really did something to, you know, the gazebo or the pavilion at Madrona or something? We haven't had that as an issue. And so we didn't want to limit someone, just like you said, you'll attack just something simple. Obviously, if like somebody went to Gentle Woods and set up a zip line in the structure, that'd probably be bad.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, fine, I.
Yeah, and that would happen, it's one of those, you know, we don't like rules unless we don't, you don't have to have them. Most rules become because somebody does something incorrect. If at some point somebody really did something to one of the structures, then yeah, we'd probably have to post that and put a thing on here, no more than tax or something.
Or you cite the criminal mischief that caused damage to it, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I just, because I thought, I seem to get that that was a bit of a mis agreement. One of the things down on O, again, to the amphitheater, additional electricity, I didn't understand what additional electricity was.
For example, with our sound system, we have a spider box. It's a box with numerous plugs on it that, yeah, a little heavier duty stuff, and that's not, I mean, the amphitheater structure is got electricity to it, you can plug and play right there, and that's what, that's what's meant.
Yeah, and I assumed that, I just wasn't, I didn't, I would have that out of additional electricity, good enough, that's.
Yeah, okay.
What's, what's the city's vision or definition of the word fixed? Like if I'm, if I'm in a band and I'm playing music in the park and I have a sign that I want, just a sign that says I want to lean up against the back of it, is that permitted?
I'm not sure I'd call that a fixed.
A fixed implies some kind of connection.
Some sort of attachment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's, what's the city's vision or definition of the word fixed? Like if I'm, if I'm in a band and I'm playing music in the park and I have a sign that I want, just a sign that says I want to lean up against the back of it, is that permitted?
I'm not sure I'd call that a fixed. A fixed implies some kind of connection.
Some sort of attachment.
Yeah.
Yeah. In that case, I think with, not having defined the term in the resolution or the rules, you'd go to the dictionary, and that would, that would tell you what a fixed means.
And practically speaking, you're talking nailing something, if somebody used some pretty harsh double-stick tape to stick their sign up and it's ripping off the brick when we go there, that would promote it.
Taking the finish off the wood.
Yeah.
Schinkel Brothers Band will be an excellent task. Looking forward to that.
Code enforcement. And I'll be there. I'll be there, I can, wear another hat for the code enforcement while I'm there.
Hold up in cuffs for a two-day sign.
Show's over, folks.
It violates the A-frame.
That's right.
So I, I would just like to say that this is, Monmouth is a small town, and one of the things that makes small towns charming is things like dog shows or costume events or a magician wanting to come do a magic show in the amphitheater. And we have an entire alphabet of rules and regulations here that they have to comply with. We've already had, lost the opportunity to have a children's theater presentation there because the amphitheater, even though it says theater in its name, was not designed for theater. I've learned unfortunately that the doors that open are a safety hazard. I don't know how that happened, how someone can be knocked over by the doors, why that wasn't part of the design. And I've also learned that the construction was such that the doors are falling off of the hinges. Vandalism. What, what is going on there in our parks? It seems like we should be doing a lot more to make it easier for small-town Monmouth to put on small-town events without having to go through an entire alphabet of rules and regulations. I mean, the last one is Z.
So again, this is resolution number eighteen thirty-five. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of resolution eighteen thirty-five adopting revised group event policies for the use of city parks and adjacent rights-of-way and repealing resolution sixteen fifty.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, the resolution number eighteen thirty-five. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Aye.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
And the motion passes five to one. And now move on to counselor comments.
What about this one? It wasn't included that we got.
Right, that's the resolution that was.
It wasn't included in the back.
So I'm saying it was part of this one?
Yeah.
So are there any counsel comments tonight?
I would, I would make a brief comment and hope to have the opportunity to make more comments. I was, I was disappointed to hear, Mark, that you're going to be changing directions and there'll be ample, I'm hoping there'll be ample time to provide all the thanks that you're deserving. And as we, Laurel and you, went to the tree board and began to talk about music in the park and subdivision and stuff, and it'd be a hard man to, hard man to replace, and we certainly hope it will. hopefully we'll find a way to express that appreciation.
Maybe they'll change it. Well, he actually did change his mind a little bit.
I'll be here through the end. So I'll be here through the side.
We got time to work on it.
I propose an emergency ordinance.
So with this, the order of business will, we've got an executive session. We are going to, I'll read the instructions for the executive session. We will recess the council meeting to go to work session, and then when we adjourn the work session, then we'll come back into the regular session to deal with the executive So, May 2nd, 2017, city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing, discussing ORS 192 dot 6601F, consideration of exempt public records and ORS 192 dot 5012, trade secrets. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192 dot 6601F, consideration of public records and ORS 192 dot 5012, trade secrets, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Designated, designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will turn to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken this evening after returning from the executive session. So do I have a motion to recess this meeting to go to work session?
So, move at recess. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we will recess, then we can go to the back room for our work session.